Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Casey Barney?
Here.
Lee Sharps?
Here.
Kathleen DeWolf?
Here.
Harold Limms, I'm here. Fran Newton is currently on her way. We'll start off by going over the minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes of September 4th?
Casey and I were in absentia.
Yes, you were. Yes, you were. Okay, Ca- well, does that put us in a conundrum? Can we even vote on it? Did you?
Well, it's not a law you have to vote on.
Yeah, that's true.
I didn't find any corrections.
Okay. All right, I did not either. An entertaining motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second, that motion? All is unfair?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstains?
Yeah, abstains. Two abstains, okay. So, we have consent agenda. Weeks of September 4th, payroll $21,983. AP was $312,588. For the week of the 10th, we have payroll being $17,574. Under department heads, we have Craig Moore- oh, I'm sorry, we have Anna Barney here with Parks and Rec Department. Would you like to speak?
I'm talking to you guys tonight about the trees at the campground. We had a year where one of the trees broke off, came down, fell on the camper. It's been taken care of and everything, but I had three people come to look at the rest of the campground to see which trees might do that again. So, and I sent you guys the three estimates. And what I would like to do is have those taken care of as soon as the camping season is over. It just comes this day weekend, October 8th. It is, there's one that's considerably lower. You guys have them. And after Craig and I went over and looked at the ones at the beach, his guys would be able to do so, we could take a little more off that. So, the amount I put was $10. $8.50, yes. That would take care of everything, and Craig's guys would do the other stuff that isn't going to fall on anything or have the potential to fall on anything.
Where does this fit into the budget, Charlie?
Well, we'd have to make up, make it up somewhere else in the budget.
How much do we have to make up?
What I have for the campground, that, because this happened towards the beginning of the season, so I didn't do some of the things that I was planning on doing. So, right now, I have $3,000 between the two campground lots. You know, that's not a lot of it, but it's a percentage of it. Because that's all I have. I only have like $3,700 for a campground anyway.
Now, thinking outside of the box, with the materials that are left, the chips and whatnot, will you retain those and use them around your campground for bedding and whatnot, around the tree stumps and stuff that comes down, or?
When talking to them, they said that they would cut the pieces down so they're manageable.
Okay.
Not exactly sure with that.
Well, the other thing that comes to mind is I have a friend who runs a business on the side, I guess you'd call it, a campfire wood business. And if this is something that you're gonna get left with all of this, that could be some money literally just laying around that we may want to look at as a board, as to be able to put some of this money back into the town.
Are we allowed to do that, Charlie, to sell off firewood? I mean, it's a great idea if we could recoup some of the losses. Is that something that?
Yeah, I don't see why. I thought we've done it before.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
My suggestion would be to process it and sell it on site to your campers.
Depending on what size they cut it down to.
Right.
Those trees are cute.
And if you figure even the manpower involved, if you were to buy wood by the bundle, even if you sold it for a dollar or two less than your competition, you'd still be getting about $350 to $400 per quart of pine. With a little bit of hardwood in it. I mean, campfire wood is a lucrative business, and maybe that would help you out in the long run. Could establish some clients and in the long run have, always have a way to dispose of your wood.
So, Ann, I happened to run into Craig in the office and the campground, you wouldn't, wouldn't be an issue. If you're gonna take any trees down at the waterfront, not trim, take them down, it might trigger a permit. Because of this, the shoreline setback. I have-
If they're a hazard?
If they're a hazard.
Which is, I had the professionals come in and tell me which trees are a hazard.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I ran out of colored ink. But you're welcome to read this. This is a DES fact sheet. This is the most important one. I did use my colored ink on this. And I'm gonna read this out loud. "Any dead, diseased, or unsafe tree which has a structural defect imposes an imminent hazard may be cut to the ground level at any time without a shoreline permit. New Hampshire DES recommends property owners to retain documentation of the tree's condition, which you have, at the time of removal, such as clear photos and/or written confirmation from a horticultural professional describing the tree's defect or condition." So, if you were trimming, no issue, but as I told Craig, once you bring equipment in there and try to pull up the stumps, it triggers a permit. So, you have to either live with the stumps, they can be ground down to ground level. But you can't wrench the stump out of the ground without permitting, without a permit. So, you're welcome to read these and-
Yep, and Craig and I talked about it, and we did take pictures.
Yeah, I went down and looked at the trees, at least on the beach. I didn't go up in the campground.
Yep, and we took pictures and stuff so that we could get a hold of them and send them, like, this is what we need to do, this is why.
Okay, that sounds-
And Greg, it goes along, not with the trees, but because this is your area that you have oversight of, the cattail area, that it would be to your advantage, and this is now-
At the same time.
At the same time. Have them come down and say how to manage the cattail area. And then you'll be documented, and everything should be copacetic. But we have, we need to make sure our documentation is-
Yes, we took pictures and we have all that stuff. We're just-
Yep, so I know that-
I'm just trying to see if we can find the money to do this, because for the safety reasons, you know, the professionals were the ones that these trees need to come-
Could it be done incrementally, like, do the campground? Because that seems like the most important part to get done now. And the beach, maybe next spring?
I had asked about that, but it would, it-
Craig's winner is-
I understand that it would create additional costs because they'd have to bring the equipment back.
Right, but Craig's-
If Craig can do it.
Oh, if Craig can do it, okay.
Craig's gonna do the beach, so that's not gonna cost us anything.
Oh, so this money is just for the campground?
This is all campground, the tent.
Okay.
If you guys have the estimate there, I took out, if you see the bottom one?
The estimate's at 13, isn't it?
It's $12,950, and we took out $21, because Craig can do that part.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, it's the 10 and it's $6.50. So, it's $10,850. So, it would be, yeah, if we had them coming twice, it's gonna cost us more, because I have to set up and tear down. But Craig's people, or him, whoever it is, I don't know. I don't know who's actually done it, but he said they could do the beach part.
So, when I went down and looked, I have to admit, I never did this.
And saw all the dead stuff at top. That's, yes, that's where it is.
And there's already some stuff on the ground. There's already branches on the ground.
Yeah, because it could happen at any time.
You don't need any widow makers in the campground.
And those trees are, they're hickory, not hickory, are they hickory?
There's three different kinds.
No, no, a locust. They're a locust. A locust, and they really don't provide a lot of shade or- They're kind of a weedy tree, and they grow in clumps.
And once they split, it's all the weekend.
Yeah, that's what, most of them seem to be double. And they're right over that sand, that little thing you have with the sand in it that gets way in it, yeah.
So, do we have a motion? Or can we have a motion?
You can entertain a motion.
I can entertain a motion, to go with the lowest estimate of the three and have the trees cut as soon as the camping season ends and comes this day weekend?
I would make said motion.
Is there a second to said motion?
And where do we want to, do you want, if we take it out of my mind-
We didn't say where to take it out.
Okay.
I'll be way over, but I don't, that's up to you.
Yeah, your line, the line will go over. We would expend that line to show the improvements that we're trying to obtain around. Where, I can't tell you where we'd make up the $7,000 extra. We're gonna have to, I mean, it's pretty much an emergency.
Yeah, so we will have to- We can't make that, that piece part of the motion then. The part of the motion would be that we would have to find from some other line the funds to make up for the deficit.
The fund, it will come from that campground line.
The campground maintenance line.
Yeah, $3,000 from the campground maintenance line.
It will just go over, and then next year when we, or this year when we talk to the budget company, you know, at town meeting, they ask why it's over, well, that's why that line will go over.
I have a feeling that some of the theme tonight is gonna be, we are now facing delayed maintenance that hasn't been taken care of. And now it's becoming very expensive. It's becoming expensive.
The thing that you might want to change in your motion is the company to go with.
Yeah, actually, name the company.
Yeah, what, okay.
I don't have the, do you have the-
Yeah, what was the name? Okay, so-
Resign the motion and do it over.
Resign the motion?
Resign the motion.
Would you like to make a new motion?
I would like to make a motion to go with the lowest bid cost of $10,850 put forth by Chipper's to take care of the troublesome trees at the campground.
Is there a second?
A second?
Okay, okay. Do we need any more discussion? I mean, obviously, the $3,000 from the campground expenses and the remaining $7,850 to be determined.
I'm thinking that it is a town-owned property or building, and that we had a warrant article not too long ago to expend monies up to $25,000 for the maintenance upkeep of town-owned properties and buildings.
Oh, the, oh, the building maintenance line?
Yeah.
Those buildings, no.
Wasn't buildings and grounds? I thought it was buildings and grounds. And we can double check if I'm-
Well, can we have a vote on the motion on the floor first?
May I ask something first? What happened to the total camper? How, was, did we pay for that?
It went through their insurance.
It went through their insurance, okay.
Yes, and they, they had it replaced, and Craig's guys came in and pulled out everything that fell and stuff.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
So, all those in favor of the motion to have the trees taken down by Chipper's with funds to be discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It would be, I mean, Harold's right, it's worth looking into the exact wording of the building maintenance fund to see if it covers any grounds. All right, well, I think we need to discuss where that money's gonna come from then.
Okay.
And so, it's okay for Craig to do the ones at the beach?
I'll, I'll, I'll make sure I follow up with the-
Yeah, please make sure you follow up with DES. Okay. Thank you, Ann. It's always an adventure. I apologize for being late, but I did want to say at the outset that we want to extend our consult condolences to the families of Dan Golden and Neil Beavis, who passed on recently. Both had served as selectmen for the town and had dedicated a lot of their life to this town, and so, we express those regrets. Okay. New business? Ashland Historical Society Whipple House? Kathleen, did you, did you want to lead on this one?
Did you get your email package from Charlie?
I tried to send it to-
Okay, we had sent a message, an email some time ago. There were two parts to it. I think the easiest part is a couple of questions we had on alterations we'd like to make for Whipple House. Your approval. First is installing electric lights. Earlier, we had a motion, I knew, that we couldn't install electric outlets. But we forgot to ask for electric lights as needed.
Okay.
And we have a couple places where we really need electric lights to properly, like, light displays.
Motion to approve the addition of electric lights?
I would, is not, we aren't gonna have any discussion about this?
Well, we can have a discussion after we make the motion.
It's just that unless you want to approve every light we put in.
No.
I'll make a motion to approve all the lights that we need to be installed.
Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Okay.
I'd highly suggest that they be either LEDs or something. It's a must have, than what everybody else has in town right now.
And I was gonna suggest this, you make this request formalized by, by a document so it can be kept in the file, so we know when it was done, what was requested, and who took care of it, and what the cost was.
The request we are making is that we would be allowed to install electric lights as needed.
Yes. But for documentation purposes, since it's a town-owned building, in my discussion I had last week with Mr. Lawson, who's doing the L-Chip assessment, that if we do not have full documentation, whoever comes after us, and we're all aging, that we need to have the file. No, no, we need to have the file as complete as possible, so whoever comes in after us knows exactly what was done, what was requested, who did it, how it was done, what the cost was, and it's just kept in a file. Just like you, at least I do as a homeowner. This is how I handle the maintenance of my house. And it's just, you know, it's just formalizing it, you know, in a letter, in a document.
Well, we do keep track of our expenses and-
Yes, but it doesn't come to the town office to be put into the Whipple House file. The last time I looked at it, there, there really wasn't that much in it. And if, and if something happened, we don't have a reference to go back to.
And we do ensure the building, so it's, it's a good idea to have records of what, what's been done.
Just like you would do as a homeowner, like, when you, you know, you hire an electrician, he usually, or like Ann just did, she presented a document with what the work was gonna be done, who was doing it, how much it cost, and when it was gonna be done.
Do we have a dedicated file right now, or are we just gonna make one?
There is a file, but there's not much in it, yeah.
We can throw, we can put these minutes in there too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's gonna be in the minutes.
Absolutely.
But still, it's whoever, yeah. But it would be nice to close the loop with, with what was done. I would agree with that.
And because I had to do research with, say, the town beach.
Yeah.
I had, and that wasn't that old. That was only a 10-year period. And they couldn't find the information that I needed to fill out the DES application. You know, Fran, because you worked on it. So, Ann could have her beach replenishment done.
Right.
And just, you know, just like DES requests also, you know, documentation, so the right hand knows what the left is doing. I think that's a good practice for us to continue to, to, if we don't do it already, to do it in town.
Okay.
David, are you still renting the property?
Can we finish with this motion first? Yes, we have a motion on the floor. We haven't had a vote. So, all those in favor of allowing the Historical Society to install electric lights as needed in the Whipple House and to provide the select board with appropriate documentation for the work, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. What else, David?
Well, the other was a similar alteration. We have a dehumidifier in the basement, which goes by a pump into the sewer system. But we're having problems somewhat with mold and things on the first floor in the museum, which is not heated from, it's not heated. So, we do have a standalone dehumidifier, but it, it just fills up a tank, and then where does the water go unless somebody comes along and empties it?
Yeah.
So, what we really like to do is to put in a permanent dehumidifier that would drain into the sewage system essentially. Because we do have a restroom on the first floor.
Okay.
Obviously, it drains everything.
Yeah.
So, we're thinking of that, so we can have a dehumidifier that would run all the time, and we wouldn't have to come around every day to empty it.
Have you gotten an assessment about, as to the feasibility of doing that from a plumber?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We wanted to know if you'd allow us to do that. It'd be in the middle room of the museum, on the side of the first floor.
Think we need it.
Yeah, well, mold is not a good thing.
Mold and humidity are not friends of artifacts.
Okay, so, can I have a motion to allow the Historical Society to install a permanent dehumidifier on the first floor?
Make said motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
And just like the past motion, please document it, because if you're noticing issues now, it needs to be tracked before it gets into the plaster walls or the furnishings or anything like that. So, if we have, there's a timeline that we say, okay, it started, we really noticed it in 2018, and here we are 2020.
Yeah.
Either the dehumidifier took care of the issue, or we need to take other steps.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Anything else on the Whipple House?
Well, the one other thing was that you were talking about a meeting with this board and our board to discuss the Whipple House.
Yeah.
Our board just wants to know beforehand what we're talking about. So, if you're prepared to talk about it.
Yeah. I think it was to review the lease, make sure that, that we're complying with the deed and with the warrant articles?
Yes, and that there's been some RSA changes, changes in how a town leases their, their property. Those are fairly the last few years. So, the document is dated, what, 1976? It needs to be updated to reflect that all our, the town is meeting all RSAs for leasing of a town-owned property, and that it just, it just needs to be reviewed again, you know, by our town council to make sure that the language is correct and up to date.
Has it been sent to Mitchell's office, Charlie? I shudder to think about anything going to legal these days.
It did, too, so.
But not recently, okay.
2015, there was a comment from council that said that the lease was, shouldn't have been done.
Then we need to have it reviewed again, and I think we need to have a meeting and, and get his comments and, and find out what the issues are.
Well, the issue is, when the property was taken, or sorry, the property was given, it was given in a charitable, charitable trust. Charitable trusts don't allow properties to be leased for dwelling units.
Well, there was a warrant article allowing that, that piece of it, so-
But I think the, what's the, did they vet warrants back then?
I don't know.
The town has no authority to authorize the leasing of property for dwelling purposes. That is beyond the bounds of the charitable purpose.
Well, the town is, the town is leasing the building to the Historical Society. It's the Historical Society that's leasing the, the apartment.
Yeah, and I think that's what it is, that the warrant doesn't allow, we see to sublease it as a dwelling. It was given to the town to use for historical purposes, not-
And that one went to probate court.
Yeah, yeah, it's a probate issue.
We, well, we've been leasing the property, part of the building ever since we occupied it.
Yes, we know that, yeah.
So, that was during the lifetime of the donor. He had no objection.
There's no documentation stating that, David, in the file that we have at the town office.
Well, you can raise a question. We-
I think that points moved, David. We need to have all this documentation in a file, dedicated file at the town office, so you know what you have to do, and the town knows what they have to do. And without that information, you have a different point of view. We have a legal opinion from council, and we have to make sure that, that we're following the law, to be honest with you.
Well, what we need to do is find a way to make this right.
Work, that's right.
To make this, I don't think we want to end this lease, because it supports the repairs of the building. But we need to figure out a way to make the documentation-
And we have to do that through, through-
Yeah, we have a meeting, and, and we need to get legal involved, and find a, find a win-win for this.
Because, you know, here we are, 2018.
Yeah, I don't want this coming back to bite the Historical Society or the town. But, you know, given what David has said, and, and I, I don't know the history, I haven't been around, but we need to find a way to make this right.
So, you are, you're still renting it?
Yes.
Do you rent it enough to maintain the building?
What do you mean by maintain the building?
Because part of the rent is to go towards the maintenance of the building.
Part of it, yes. The lease says it is for, we can use the money for our corporate purposes.
But the warrant doesn't say that.
Right, but-
So, that's the, that's another issue. The people, the town voted on the language in the warrant article. The lease reflects something different. How do you reconcile that?
The lease was signed by the selectman like two months later. I mean, my, I don't know, you're all there.
Yeah.
No, it's Earl Parkett.
Earl Parkett's still kicking?
No, 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 I think that might be his uncle.
Yeah, that's his uncle, okay.
Sorry, sorry.
I know this is an uncomfortable discussion, but, but you have a warranty deed, you have a town warrant that was voted on, then you have language in a lease that doesn't reflect what the town voted on to accept.
Well, my question would be, does the language in the warrant article binding on the selectman at the time, or was it just advisory?
And that's the kind of legal advice we need. Again, I would just, I would just-
Are they ma'am?
I-
Why wouldn't it be binding?
It doesn't, the wording isn't advisory.
It's right here. The only way out of this, or into this, is a warrant article, Article 14, 1976, Town of Ashland. See if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter into a net lease of $1 with the Ashland Historical Society Incorporated for the purchase of maintaining said premises and making improvements thereon, and in connection therewith to sublease and collect such rents. There's your subleasing your rent. Said monies to be used to further maintain and improve said property known as the Whipple House. To be effective for fiscal year of 1976 and thereafter until rescinded by the vote of the town. It has to stay the way it is until it's rescinded by it.
Yeah.
So, we're not, we, we can't make decisions. It needs to go to warrant.
No, yeah.
You want to change it, it needs to go to warrant articles. There's only one way you can do it.
Right.
Possibility. All I can say is that the selectmen at the time agreed to a broader-
But did they have the legal right to do that? That's what we don't know.
Maybe the law changed.
And that's what, that's what we have to find out, because-
Again, I, I suggest we run this by legal with the history and the concerns, and meet with the Historical Society, and try to find a way to make this right. And if it means going to, for another warrant article in March to close the loop, we will do so.
And the other thing is, if the rent, which I don't know what the tenant, the, the, wait a minute.
Sublease?
The sublease. I don't know what their rent is. If that's not sufficient to maintain the Whipple House, then we might have to adjust, we might have to have a warrant article to-
But that's at their discretion.
It is at their discretion, yeah. It is, it is, it is not our decision. I mean, thus far, they haven't asked for any money to maintain the house, so-
We lease, they sublease. That's the way it has been, and that's the way it has to be until it's changed by warrant.
Right.
To answer an earlier question, some years, we spend a lot of money on the Whipple House. This year, more than the lease puts in. Other years, we spend very little.
Yeah.
It depends on what needs to be fixed.
Right.
So, it varies from year to year.
And again, you haven't ever come to the town and asked for money to do these repairs, so-
No. Occasionally, we get help from the DESW, from the electric department, the trees, but we don't really ask.
Okay.
I, I think this is good, because this conversation allows people who sit in these seats 30 years from now that we have some transparency. There's, there's nothing that you guys are doing wrong. I believe if something's not broken, don't fix it, but we need to have it laid out for future select board members.
Yeah, that, that's well put, Harold, because we keep stumbling across things that weren't documented, and we're having to-
And, you know, I used to tell my students, documentation's your friend.
Right.
That, you know, a lot of issues have been taken care of, when you can say, I have full documentation on this.
Yep.
So, what do you want me to go back to legal counsel with? I'm not clear as to what I'm supposed to ask.
Everything.
How, how do we reconcile, how do we reconcile the warrant article to the language in the lease?
Right. Okay.
And what steps do we have to do to take that? Does that have to be put in front, you know, as a warrant to the town?
And when you get that information, then perhaps we can set up a meeting with the Historical Society to-
So, what's, what's the issue? Is it the wording between the two, or is it of the legality of something?
Probably the legality, because they said-
So, it's not an issue with the wording, right? Because I don't see an issue with the wording.
No, it's, it doesn't match the language of the warrant article, and that's what the vote is-
Which doesn't match?
The lease doesn't match the language of the warrant.
But where?
About how they use the monies from the rent.
Such as for the lease.
Yeah. Yeah. Including the maintenance. But the warrant has said only for the repairs of the Whipple House.
It says to be used to further maintain and improve.
But that's different than corporate purposes. That means they have the discretion to use it at their discretion.
Maybe they're improving. I mean, to back what David is saying, not to play devil's advocate here, but to give them, you know, to use for their corporate needs, that would ensure that in lean years, where he has no expenditures, that they can carry forth that money and use it the years that they have more repairs.
Maybe it has to be handled like we do with the zoning language, that we have to update the language and make sure that it fits.
Well, that's what, that's what the lawyer will tell us. Well, that's what the, that's what the lawyer will tell us. Are there any issues in the lease or in the warrant article that conflict? And if so, how do we fix it?
How do we fix it?
Okay.
So, everybody says, yeah.
So, currently, the money that we collect from the, the lease just goes into our general fund.
Yeah.
To use it for any purpose we have left here.
Okay.
It's the way we use it, according to the lease.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
Till further notice?
Yes.
We'll, we'll table this until we get some more information, okay? Thank you.
And going forward?
Thank you, David.
If we ever, uh, bequeath a, a voting again?
Yeah, well-
You know, it's nice, but boy-
I know, well-
It, it can cause issues, yeah.
This discriminer houses causes problems too, so-
Well, see, I wasn't gonna say it out loud.
No, no, it's true.
And that's what it is.
Because the wording of the-
It's a nice gift, and things change from the time that it's bequeathed to whoever's using-
Exactly.
The building.
No, it's, it's a good lesson learned.
At the time.
Okay. Emery and Garrett Groundwater Investigations, Charlie?
They reached out, Emery and Garrett Groundwater Investigation, the division of GZSA. They're basically, they're ge- they're argeologists that monitor landfill for gases and groundwater. Required per NHDES to have a permit. They're basically the company that submits the permit on behalf of the town to DES, um, and they do all the testing. Basically, there are contracts up with them, and they put forward a new five-year contract to continue per requirement for the testing.
Okay. And how does this compare with the previous contract? Is it about the same amount of money?
Uh, yeah, it's about the same amount of money. It looks about, be about the same.
Yeah.
Um, they also do testing at, over at the electric building. Actually, I think we signed that in March.
Yep.
But we don't pay for that.
Right.
That is through the petroleum, petroleum grant fund.
Okay.
You mean the utilities building, Sixth Collin Street?
Yeah, it used to be a gas bank there.
But not the newly built electric building?
Yeah, but the new building.
Okay, people at home might, might not want to confuse that.
I think this is a case where the state made a mandate, and then the town has to pay for it.
Yes, it's exactly what it is. Yeah, and I, I've requested this, tried to get us out of it. Because how many more times do we have to do this?
I know.
Um, and the state keeps changing the testing requirements. Emery and Garrett has on our behalf tried to say, why do we have to test for this? The state has bended a little bit, that's why these costs are a little bit lower, but, and we gotta do it, basically.
Yeah. All right, in that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve a five-year contract with Emery and Garrett Groundwater Investigations to submit the Town of Ashland Groundwater Management Permit to NHDES, conduct annual groundwater testing, and landfill gas cap inspections at the Ashland landfill. And the costs are spelled out here.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Budget can decide.
Okay, so, you have the original for me to sign?
Yes.
For all of us to sign?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. Any other new business? All right, old business, town administrator updates.
Everyone's favorite part of the meeting?
Yep, absolutely.
I got my popcorn.
Yeah. It's not long this, this month. The library continues to have people visit. 645 people visited in August. The, all the patrons- What's that? Sorry, I thought you had a question. 1,033 items from the library last month were used, and 86 loadable audio and ebooks. A couple of common events at the library, there's the teen night at the library, will be held on Friday, September 21st, from 6:30 to 8 o'clock. Book group will be held on Monday, September 24th at 7:00 PM. The Fri- uh, excuse me, the Friends of the Library and the Historical Society are hosting the New Hampshire Humanities Program. If I am not for myself, who will be for me? The story of George Washington's runaway slave who found freedom in New Hampshire. The program is free and will be held at the Booster Club on Wednesday, September 19th at 7:00. This coming Wednesday. There was a quote for this month, "Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation."
I agree.
Walter Cronkite?
Walter Cronkite.
Yes.
Who was he?
Oh, stop, man.
Oh, come on, Charlie.
Before your time.
Before my time?
Before your time.
You missed something, that's all I can tell you.
Sorry.
And that's the whole-
TV guy, right?
Yeah, TV guy, yeah, sure.
60 Minutes.
No, that was, uh, Andy, something.
It was Andy Rooney.
Well, he was one on 60 Minutes, Walter Cronkite was the premier news-
Trying to make that funny.
What's it, NBC, CBS?
CBS. Anyway, moving on.
Okay. The fire department had 39 calls, 28 medical emergencies, eight fire rescue calls, three motor vehicle accidents. Continue to do training, orientation on the new engine, EMS training on recognizing, dealing with provider PTSD. Some departments had to train in on safety and operations involving down wires. Final phase of the EMS in the warm zone training. That, I don't remember by, that happened September 8th. That involved the PD and fire department, as well as personnel from surrounding towns. The new truck is in service. The annual apparatus evaluation was completed on Engine 1 and Ladder 1. The ambulance was out of service for a couple weeks. You guys got an email about that? But it's been corrected, and it's back in service now. The air compressor maintenance and SCBA flow testing has been completed. Emergency generator annual maintenance and fire alarm system maintenance was just completed September 5th. Aerial and ground ladder testing will be in October. Life safety code inspections continue. NFIRS reports for August were reviewed and sent to the state fire marshal. And Deputy Buzke has completed quality assurance review of all Team SIS reports. Tax collector collected 61,191 in taxes for August. 35,221 in vehicle registrations, $50 for dog registrations, and 205 for vital records. The parks and rec, did you want to give this, Anna?
No.
You said that way too quick.
Yeah, no, all right. Summer camp, uh, ended in August, 42 kids signed up for the camp. Parks and rec averaged 36 a week.
That's very good.
Excellent.
Yeah. They, uh, went on some new trips, they invited, uh, shows to the other camps to put on, uh, to come to our wildlife preservation. I think I went to that one. That was pretty, they had it at, at the gym. Beach closed on August 26th. We had the estimates for the campground that was discussed earlier. We're thinking about putting a heat pump, I think, into the Booster Club?
Heat, so that we can-
Heat pump, heat pump. The building, yeah, the building needs some maintenance. It was really built for summer, even though they use it through the winter for the kids and stuff, and it sort of seems-
You, you, you've been playing catch-up with the maintenance, too. One thing gets fixed and something else has to be attended to.
Yeah. Uh, the after-school program started in August, they had 18 kids signed up the first day of '24 by weekend.
Nice.
Great.
Yeah. And you continue to use the food bank for affordable snacks. And last, Ian reached out to get some volunteers, and they're gonna repaint and fix the dugouts of the ball field.
Okay, great.
They need it.
Uh, the buildup inspector, uh, this one's, I guess you could say new, had six permits, six inspections, six COs, certificate of oxygen ccs, and collected 1,711 dollars.
Okay, nice. Project list.
List.
Yeah.
Okay. No real updates for the TAF grant. We did get the new updated recently, since I updated this, the new amount. Remember how we went, we were over, and then we had to, Craig and I sat down with DOT. We got those new numbers and sent them to DOT.
Okay, good.
Thompson Street, the road project, we, we weren't selected for the grant funding, unfortunately. A lot of people, as you can see, 88 construction projects submitted, and they only selected 19.
Wow.
So, that's unfortunate.
So, we have to work hard on the state revolving fund one?
Yeah, we're still with the state revolving fund. Uh, the Ashland Properties Packard, the mill site, uh, we're gonna schedule a public hearing October 1st for the feasibility grant.
Okay.
Um, that's per the grant, and then move forward with an application.
We still need a date for the selectmen to go on a tour. We haven't gotten any feedback from anybody yet, so really need to make that happen. And I guess for the next three weeks, Craig can do it.
Like, late in the afternoon or after, you know, when instead of a weekend.
Yeah, it just has to be in full daylight, right, Craig?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's safer that way.
Yeah, if it's safer. Yes, we definitely want to be safe.
You know, like, 4:00 or 5:00, or something like that, maybe Casey-
It might be a little dark.
Yeah, a little dark.
It's dark in there year-round.
There's no light, lights aren't working?
Uh, there's nothing in there that works.
I'll give everybody a flash.
I have a match we can see with, though.
Yeah, the fire department has some pretty nice big flashes.
Yeah, we'll give it some light.
Big ones. Any thoughts? Is there anything we can nail down today, instead of waiting for-
Fran, we did have one outing, but you couldn't make it, so I'm available during the day. Harold?
I'm available in the afternoons.
Lee?
Afternoon's good.
And Casey, if you can come?
He's, he's working till 5:00.
Wouldn't be till like 6:00 the early.
Yeah, no, I, no, I wouldn't go in that, that would be weird, yeah.
Why don't we just make it for, you know, early afternoon, and that's okay if Casey can't make it?
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, I was gonna say, we could take pictures, Matt. I don't, no, I don't think it would-
Unless it was like, very early in the morning, and then I can just shift my hours a little bit, but- 7:00 or 8:00.
Ooh.
Yeah.
I'm up, I'm up.
Harold, does that-
Yeah, it's tough. I, I get back from McConaughey around 8:00.
8:00?
Yeah.
Well, if she doesn't get back till 8:00, we'd have to make it 8:30.
Okay, 8:30 is okay.
Okay.
8:30?
Set 8:30, it's okay.
All right. Pick a day, any day this week? Thurs- now, Thursday I can't do it, Wednesday?
No, I can't, Thursday I have to go to the budget workshop.
Friday?
Not Thursday, and I'm good.
I'm like, I'd have to work Thursday and Friday.
Wednesday, Wednesday? My hearing Wednesday, the 19th?
Okay.
At 8:30, Craig, does that work for you?
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
Yeah, two days.
And where should we meet?
Outside the White Building on-
Well, are we gonna come in through El Paso side?
Yeah, well, I think-
That, that, that's how I went, went with CP.
Yeah, I think if we stop, if we kind of meet at the bottom of the fire station, maybe?
At the bottom of the fire station?
And we can walk down here.
All right, 8:30, Wednesday, the 19th. Yay.
Just a tour of the building.
Just a tour of the building.
Yeah, I'm talking-
I have an hour, but I can't go over that, because I have another commitment.
I don't believe so, as long as you're not talking town business.
We're not talking, we're just looking. We're not talking town business, there'll be no decisions made, there'll be things pointed out.
Don't even talk.
Would it be about an hour, Craig? About, would it be over an hour?
No.
No, no, no. No, you won't want to stay in there for that long.
Well, I have another minute, 9:30.
Like, don't wear sneakers.
Yeah, don't wear flip flops.
Yeah.
Yes.
Wear some boots.
And clothes you want to throw away.
Let's say tie shoes, yeah. Wear tie shoes.
He said not sneakers.
Well, I wore sneakers, but-
Tieback suits?
Yeah, no, it's fine.
No, as long as, yeah.
There could be a male you might step on, just-
Okay.
Petness.
Yeah.
I put in boots.
Okay, excellent.
September 19th.
Yes. You gonna join us, Charlie?
No, I am on, I'm out, uh-
He's, he's, he's gonna be in Italy.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fine.
That's fine.
Okay. So, continuing on.
Continuing on.
The Alchip study is continuing on. Nora Larson was in the office this week, or sorry, excuse me, last week, taking measurements, reviewing the building. And we're still hoping to get that completed by the end of the year. And we're still hoping to get that completed by the end of the year. No updates on the GIS map and that's projected to start in December. Building permit fees, we still need to schedule a public hearing for that.
We still need to get a list of fees to discuss at a public hearing.
Yeah.
We can't go in there and say, "What do you think?"
Yeah. Give us a number, any number.
Grand opportunities, nothing significant. Town of Ashland Appreciation Day. There's been some confusion about that. It's September twenty-second, but apparently Kendall can't make it.
Right, or he can make it and has...
Saturday?
I've had mixed, I've had mixed messages. And David, you haven't gotten any response yet either, have you? No, neither have I.
Is that the Saturday?
Yeah.
And what are the, there's no time?
Ten o'clock, I believe, was what originally, ten and two, one. And the church is supposed to have a cook out there.
Have we gotten confirmation, I mean, without Kendall there?
I'm not sure I can.
Or has he discussed anything with you because you don't work on Saturdays?
Me?
Yeah.
We're going to do the work before, we're going to prep everything.
Okay.
I told, like, I don't know, with you guys, I told you I'd leave you the split rail fence. It'd be most all day, it's in a pile of, um, varnail.
Yeah.
And you're going to spread that, put the fence in, and everything else would be essentially done.
Bring your silver shovel, you'll be all set.
Or if you want, we could just do it, you can have a cookout.
Yeah, and that's what I said, there seems to be a little communication breakdown, yeah.
I don't know how many, how much manpower are you going to have?
We don't.
We were going to kind of leave a little bit for you guys to do.
Anybody on the select board besides me be planning on coming?
I might or not possibly.
All right.
I have work.
You have work, that's right.
But since we're on this topic, I guess I was remiss. It's come to my attention that I should, I'm going to thank ahead of time Water and Sewer for their donation of concrete that they had left over from their project that Alan Silly and Rusty Cross, I believe, used inside the jail to put in a new concrete floor.
Nice, very nice.
Yep.
Very nice.
And right now, to me, the place is, I don't even want to touch it now. Because there's the, just cleaning it out and putting down the floor made a huge difference. And Chief Randall found some items that he didn't realize were out there and he was able to put them where they belonged. And, yeah, if you peek in the window, you'll be shocked. So, it looks like most of the work will be the landscaping portion of it.
Well, I encourage anyone...
So, I plan on being there, I am not driving this project, I'm only the ex officio, but I know, I've spoken to Craig, so I know what was supposed to be, what we had planned done.
So, I would encourage anybody, not just the select board, but any people from the public who want to volunteer a little time to come and see what there is to get done and hope the best. Okay, thank you.
So, did I get the Water and Sewer donation part correct? Did a nice job.
Good, okay.
All right. Other than that, uh, we don't have anything. You want to talk about solar?
Yes. I've not been successful in contacting Granada Paulo, the company that sent us the letter and the press release. And I have written four or five times, I've called, I've told them to, I've emailed, I asked them to call Charlie, and it has been successful. However, New Hampshire Solar Gardens, Andrew Keller and Tony Janta from Novus, I've been in contact with. And right now, we're trying to set up a date for Andrew and Tony to both come and speak with the electric company. And that's what we have to do first. They insist that we need to set up a date with them. So, they are going to get back to me with some dates and then I will contact Electric. And then we will set something up with them first and I'll let everybody know when that is.
Excellent, thank you, Lee.
Is New Hampshire Solar Gardens, were they here a couple of years ago?
Yes.
Yes. Yep, they're the ones that did the, yeah, our only presentation we've had so far. They've done a lot of large projects in the state.
The difference now is that our electric department will be installing smart meters, which is a pivotal step if you're going to put solar into town.
Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
So, was the thought to put solar at the landfill?
That will be among the presentation.
There was, I mean, there've been talks about the landfill, about the wellfields.
Yeah, the field up, yeah, off I-93.
Yeah, because there's plenty of land there.
It just looks like it needs it right there. But we'll have to, you know, discuss all that. And then it has to go before the public.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so we'll try to get that hopefully by March.
Thank you, Lee, I appreciate you following through on this.
Thank you.
Okay, any other old business?
I'd like to make a comment. I happened to be at the town office when Norm Lawson from Williams Architect came in. And this has kind of started the thread where he asked for information and it wasn't available at the office. So, he's going to have to research it now, which means a cost is now involved.
Okay.
So, that's why paperwork is very important.
Research, what? Was he looking for any?
And I don't know if anything was shared with Chief Randall. He wanted to survey of the lot to see exactly where the lines are, if there was room for any expansion. And there was nothing in...
Well, that would be nice.
Well, no, I have, I heard anecdotal information, but, you know, once again, he needs the documentation if it's not there. He has to research it in order to fulfill his portion of the architectural study.
And we'd have to resurvey by somebody.
And the other thing is, I don't know, has, has anybody been in the Whipple House other than me?
No, but I'd like to go.
Not lately.
I'd really like to go.
Harold, have you ever gone?
Not since the last...
No.
I think I was in elementary school.
Elementary school.
So, about five years ago?
Yeah, just two years ago.
Six years ago.
He was looking at the toys that we had.
So, yeah, you've seen a feeling recently.
It was on the phone, it was on the phone, Casey.
He was trying to see if there were any PlayStation twos.
Yeah, that's, that's bad when you go in the, the toy museum, you go, "Oh, I remember there." And Charlie, you've never been inside the Whipple House. So, David, I'd like to extend, you know, a wish that you, probably you are the best suited to give us a brief tour of the Whipple House, you know, and it won't take more than an hour. And the grounds, because I don't think a lot of people realize it's sitting on a quite large lot.
Oh, I know, yes.
It's pretty true.
Yeah, so, David, I mean, what's anybody's feelings?
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, sure. When should we do it? Should we wait till the leaves turn or...
I think we need to ask David.
Yeah.
I'm turning.
Well, okay, we have to wait until Charlie comes back this week?
Oh, yeah, yes, yes. So, let's, let's say sometime between now and...
At our next meeting.
Our next meeting, yeah. And you could, David, maybe you can send Charlie an email saying, "I'm available this time." And who can come, can come.
Your next meeting's when? October first.
That sounds good.
It's talking a weekday?
Probably.
Sure. Is that easier for you, David?
Well, I just, the only conflict I can see right now is September twenty-fifth and September nineteenth, before the second, right, October second, October first, yeah. So, any other days?
Well, the nineteenth, we're doing the mail tour anyway.
So, I see the nineteenth and Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
And, and I can't do Tuesday, so...
And the nineteenth?
Well, those are the...
Oh, you can't do those, okay, yeah.
Yeah, he's free the rest of the week.
Yeah. Next, the following week, I can only do the twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth.
That's...
Thursday or Friday.
That's, sounds good.
Casey, will you just have to...
I'll try, whatever we decide.
Okay.
Yeah, or we can take pictures there if somebody wanted to do that.
We could take the video.
We do have, we do have pictures on file at the town office of the inside of the Whipple House, so you can look at the thumbnails.
Okay.
So, what do we...
Do you want to give them a...
Okay, well, since we're on the topic of scheduling meetings, I guess I can jump into the next one.
So, what do we decide?
We need to finish this.
What did we decide, what, the twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seven? It's a Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, what time?
Probably morning would be a little better.
Okay. Eight-thirty?
No.
Nine o'clock? No, wait a minute, Harold, you'll be back by nine, correct?
Yes.
Then nine-thirty, sure.
Listen, Lee.
He doesn't like the morning.
Pick a time, I don't care, whatever.
Nine, nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Work for you, David?
Sure.
Okay, now Charlie, you can get into your...
Well, you don't really have to mark a date, but the board put this on the agenda to start thinking about budget needed, apartment heads. Pretty much, I think they're all pretty going to be due by the twenty-fifth, which is Tuesday.
Be done by the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, yeah. Most of them should have them in by probably the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
So, we'll have these two tours out of the way, so that will be taken care of.
So, maybe if you guys can think of some dates, October first, we could probably talk about it.
Yeah, we should probably nail some. When do we do to go to the budget committee? When are they looking for a budget?
They said the ninth, but, yeah, I hit...
No, not going to happen.
Previous years, it's always been, what, the first week of November? Correct me if I'm wrong, David.
It's usually November.
Yeah. So, at our next meeting, we'll nail down some dates to review the budgets and hopefully by then you'll have all the departments in.
That's right.
Okay. Other select board items, I want to announce that there is a meeting tomorrow night of the Economic Development Committee at six-thirty. But I also regret to announce the resignation of Steve Felton. His work and his family is just taking way too much commitment. Yes, he has done an amazing job and we really need more people to step up if we're going to carry this, this forward, because he's really led the charge. So, Tuesday will be his last meeting and that is at the fire station, correct? So, any other select board items?
I have one, actually. The other day when I was at voting, I noticed that we have some beautiful large boulders over by the old jail that have been moved about. And in times and meetings past, we discussed a commemorative rock with a plaque on it to celebrate the hundred-and-fiftieth. I thought perhaps if we have to move that from one location to another that we, as a board, could decide if we had a spot in town where we'd like to place said rock and maybe the hundred-and-fiftieth could, if they have any unallocated funds to put towards a plaque where they could put all of their names on it and any people who were involved or anything they would like to say and it could be their thing. And we could provide the land for which it to be on and the boulder to put the plaque upon.
That's a great idea.
Nice idea, Harold.
Yeah, let's, let's...
I was thinking Riverwalk down by Mechanic Street where they wanted to put the bell.
Yep, well, let's talk to the, to the committee and check out the rock. I think that's a great idea.
What do you think, Greg? One of those rocks that you're going to move up by the jail, one of them is pretty good size.
That's a great idea.
Hit it with some muriatic acid or something to make it shine and then...
Okay, great.
Beautiful.
Any other select board items?
I'd like to hear, Harold.
I just had a brief, on the last planning board that I attended, we just approved a revision of the rules of procedure and also our site plan review application. We approved the revisions for those and we are now in the process of reviewing our sign regulations and enforcement.
Okay. Thank you. Any other select board items? Yes, Martine?
Just a note following up on the planning board.
Okay.
Our second meeting of the month would normally be the twenty-sixth. We've had to change it to Wednesday, the nineteenth.
Okay. Nineteenth's going to be a busy day.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, Chief?
I was a little late getting here about the stuff with the trees being cut down or the campground.
Yep.
And I got in on the, I heard the discussion about using it for firewood and everything over there. One of my questions is, who's going to cut it up and split? Because I do firewood and I know the team is...
I do too, a lot of work.
Cutting, splitting, stacking, and just how is that all going to come to play, you know? Because you can spend a tremendous amount of time cutting and splitting wood.
Oh, absolutely.
And if it's campfire wood, it's going to be split a little bit finer than it would be for your wood stove.
Yep.
So, I don't know if anybody thought about that process? I, I have, I talked to them. They didn't, they're going to cut it the best they could, they said. And, yeah, and I don't know what... What does that mean? I, yeah. I don't think they're going to cut it up to quite the extent.
Stove, stove.
They're going to cut it out the best they could.
They're going to cut it so we can haul it.
They haul it, they haul it, not like, you know, for firewood. When you're generally talking about a piece that's a foot long or so and then it's split.
Well, even the woodchips can be used.
Right, we have a stockpile of woodchips that we can use wherever, if...
Yeah.
I was just curious about that.
Yeah, I, I don't think those kinds of plans have been made because we just discussed the possibility of selling the wood. Now, people who want wood for their home, I know my neighbor, you know, cuts up big logs and he has a splitter, so there are people out there who might buy the big logs to take home.
Grapple load and whatnot.
I, I don't know, but we obviously have to look into that, but you're right.
But generally, pine's not a wood that people will...
No.
Well, it's mostly hardwood, isn't it? No?
No, what they're going to cut is all pine.
Okay.
But that, that, usually people that cut that for firewood, they get it free.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's the only way they can be affordable for that little itself.
Are they going to ship the bigger logs off to the mill? Is that, are they taking those with them?
They're supposed to be leaving everything.
They don't want it.
They don't want, they don't, yeah.
They said they would give them in pieces that he can...
They don't even want the chips, they want...
Yeah, no, no, stay with us.
Perhaps it's a local sawmill that would be...
So, did they core any of the trees to figure out that they just rotted out on the inside and there's no real value to them or something? Because those are pretty nice straight trees.
I had three different people, three different contractors come over and tell me that they, I don't know, they can tell if pitch is coming out of the holes, then it's dead from the inside.
There's one that's rotten, the big one that hit by lightning on the top and spiraled all the way down.
There's different things that they saw wrong.
Well, I know that the sawmills are getting very finicky about length on these things. They don't want them coming to eight-foot lengths because you'll never get rid of them, sawmill.
Yeah.
Because they just, they stay away from them. We would know, we would have, you could check with...
So, we're going to be left with this stuff and so we have to find some way of removing it from site that even if it's, you put a sign out free for people to haul away. People use it in wood furnaces, too.
That they would be interested in taking the bigger pieces and they would do with it.
Okay.
And then, and then DPW doesn't have to haul it down and try to...
Right.
Find a place to store it down.